Good evening, I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of December 10th, 2018. The time is 7:38. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Portemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilor Grafstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilwoman Salters.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here, thank you. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? We're thankful for having the opportunity to meet together here tonight, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, you may be seated. All right, thanks for being patient. City council had a closed session meeting earlier tonight for some good news, and regarding that, we need to add some items to the agenda tonight. So would a member of city council propose a motion to add items to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Under reports, I just flipped the page, I didn't see, is it, will it be D1 or D what?
D4.
D4 will be the council, a motion to approve a tentative agreement with the MEU, a union working here in Madison Heights.
Thank you, is there a second?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I support.
Motion was made to add item D4 regarding the tentative agreement with MEU. Is there any discussion to add this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, the motion carries.
I have a D5, sir.
Yes, please.
It would be that the, a motion to approve a tentative agreement with the ASME Local 25, which is the supervisor and assistance union.
Thank you, sir, is there support?
Your honor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you, a motion was made to add item D5 to the agenda regarding the tentative agreement with ASME Council 25, the supervisors and assistants. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. A motion?
We'll go for the trifecta, sir. We'll add a motion, which will be D6, a motion to approve the employment agreement between the city and the city manager, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion made to add item D6 to the agenda regarding the employment agreement between the city and the city manager. Is there any discussion on adding this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, the motion carries. And we also need to add the language to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Do you want to do that right at the end, or?
We need to add it now. A motion just to add that language to why we're going to the executive session, right?
Is that what you said? I just forgot. Oh, to receive a legal opinion from the attorney, from the attorney's office. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sherman?
The motion is to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation.
Mr. Corbett? Yes, I would accept that language.
All right, is there support for the motion to go into closed session later this evening to discuss pending litigation? Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Okay, a motion was made to add this to the agenda for when we get to the item executive session, that the council will go into closed session. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, that motion carries. Any other additions or deletions? I don't think there should be. All right, presentations, we have two tonight. The first presentation is regarding the Citizens Academy. Mrs. Marsh, did you have a report?
Yes, tonight concludes the city's first citywide citizens academy, and I want to say thank you to everybody who participated in that. It was a very successful program, it was enjoyed by citizens and staff had a very good time as well. This eight-week program covered the majority of city services, they got to see a tour and a background view of really what goes on here. We are going to be having the program again, so talk to any of the current members, they'll tell you how fabulous it was, and sign up. So tonight, we have the graduates of the program here with us, and the mayor and city council is going to be presenting them with certificates.
Thank you. At this time, I'll read the names, and if you'd like, you can come up and receive the certificate yourself. And after you receive the certificate from me, you can shake everyone else's hand. Mike Van Buren, would you please come up? Pat Shields, would you please come up and accept this?
Congratulations, Mike.
Please do, thank you. Ikbal Ahmed, would you please accept the certificate?
Thank you, Mike.
My neighbor.
Thank you very much.
Penny Howard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sonya Van Buren.
Thank you.
We're going to take a quick photo after, so if you want to stay up here, you're welcome to.
Crystal Fox, please.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Penny.
Good job, thank you.
Jenny Uhez, would you please accept your certificate?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, young lady.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
Loretta Forrester?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Crystal, good job.
Do you know this one?
Thank you.
Lisa Leonard, will you please come up?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And drumroll, please, for Mary Bush.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, for those participants, would you please come back up to center stage, and we'll take a quick photo.
Thanks, Mary. Thank you for your reflection.
We're not expecting. We're going to do it really well.
All right, thank you. The next presentation tonight is from the Madison Heights Youth Assistance, and it's their annual report. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Just to announce, Deb Lindsey is here, she's a caseworker for the Madison Heights Youth Assistance, and she is going to be giving the annual report. And Gary McElvery.
Good evening, welcome, the floor is yours.
Mayne, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Madison Heights for participating in youth assistance over many years, and adding this to the agenda so that we could talk a little bit louder. Youth Assistance is a tri-party sponsored program that benefits the youth and families of Madison Heights, and it goes back to 1958. There are 26 local youth assistance groups throughout Oakland County, and the whole idea is to serve the families of our communities. It's, we have many parts to this, it's a program that's set up to try to keep kids out of trouble, juvenile delinquents, help families out when they're stressed out situations with their kids, or schoolwork, or whatever it might be. We have other sponsors involved, and that includes Lanter Schools, Madison Schools, City of Madison Heights, Oakland County Circuit Court, they're the ones that provide the funding for our social worker, Deb Lindsey. And last but not least, our group of volunteer board of directors, and what that committee does is we work on raising money to be able to put kids in different educational seminars, summer camp, skill building scholarships, and then also our big item is youth recognition, where we award kids for being good citizens. It's a great program, and again, I'd like to thank you for being part of it, and we're always looking for volunteers, so if you know of anyone who would like to take part in our group, we'd love to have you. You can contact our office, which is over at the Lanter Schools, is where we have Deb's office is at, and you can contact her, and she'll set you up when our next meeting is. If nothing else, we would ask that you try to support some of our programs, which include our Vol-a-thon that we do every year, and different fundraising efforts to try to raise funds, because that's what, that's where we come up with the money to be able to do the kind of things that we need to do for the kids and families. Deb?
Welcome.
So, as a caseworker, first I want to thank you for giving us some time to talk about the program. I've been working for Youth Assistance for about 28 years, full-time and part-time, and just Saturday at our Grinch Candy Cane hunt, I had a couple people saying, "Who are you all again?" "We don't know," and we try really hard not to be the best kept secret in Oakland County for 60 years now, but we're still working on that, so. So Youth Assistance is an effective prevention program, and personally, I believe it's so effective because of that positive collaboration that we've had for over 60 years now, between our municipal sponsors, our school districts, the court, and the support of our county commissioners, and then of course, the thousand-plus group of volunteers that work across the county to make the program actually happen in real time, and to make it real to the families and kids in our communities. As a caseworker, working directly with kids and families, I get to see firsthand what a difference a program like this can make, a real prevention program. We're able to take relatively small amounts of financial resources, big amounts of in-kind resources from our sponsors and from local businesses, and put together true prevention programs. And as all of us know, putting that money at the front end of the program and trying to prevent, or the problems and prevent those more serious issues from happening saves not just financial cost to all of us, but it saves a lot of heartache and trauma to our families when we're able to prevent those more serious problems from happening. Our mission is the prevention of child abuse, neglect, and juvenile delinquency through community involvement, and we do that by trying to strengthen families. We try to strengthen kids at their level with different types of prevention programs, and we start working with them at age five and go up all the way to age 16. We're not able to work directly in terms of direct case referrals with our 17 and 18-year-olds anymore, but we do do something called information and referral. So actually today, one of my appointments was meeting with a young man who's 17, but he's having some struggles, and so my job was to meet with him and his mom to try to identify the roots of the problem, and then try to see what resources are available for the situation he's in right now. As a caseworker, I rely on specific tools. We provide assessment, basic assessment, basic short-term counseling services to our families, and for needs that we can't meet within the Youth Assistance model, I refer families and try to find local resources, depending on their situation, insurance or not, finances, to meet the needs that Youth Assistance can't meet. But I also rely on what I call casework tools, and those are often things that are provided through a group of volunteers that raise money, get support from our sponsors, so that we can do things like get kids involved in extracurricular activities with skill building scholarships, or maybe have a summer camp experience, do what we call education or recreation programs. So right now, we're working on a program that is meant to try to highlight for kids and parents some of the dangerous consequences that come with the choices that they make. Providing an education program, bringing in some outside resources on anxiety. Probably half of my referrals at this point that come through list anxiety and depression and inability to manage stress as highlighting factors for our kids that are struggling with different issues. Referrals to Youth Assistance include two categories, what we call prevention or counseling referrals, and then what we call diversion referrals. And any child under the age of 10 is going to be labeled a prevention referral, basically a casework situation where they need additional support. Where our kids are making poor risk choices, law-breaking offenses, our police officers have the choice of sending a lot of those, what we call divertible offenses, to Youth Assistance, rather than sending them to court. Our prosecutor's office and our intake juvenile department also refer some of those cases back to us. And the idea is to keep the young person out of the court system where possible, and give them the tools that they need to get themselves back on track. About any, at any given time, about half my caseload is prevention, and the other half is diversion. And with those diversion cases, while they also get the assessment and the counseling and referral to outside agencies, we also have the ability to use what I call accountability tools. So it might be an essay, or we might ask the child, if they're over 13, to do a tour out in our local county jail, where we work with our sheriff department, to do what we call U-turn, which is meant to be an educational experience. It's still scary, but an educational experience that they do with their parents. Community service hours, Judge Hunt is kind enough to let me send kids over to do what we call an observation, and then I ask them to do a short essay. So those are all educational pieces that we try to give some of the kids, to help them have some personal firsthand information of how to not get themselves into further trouble and end up in those situations. Without Youth Assistance, we don't exist, a lot of those cases are going to end up in official court. It's going to cost those families generally a couple thousand dollars minimum, as well as all of us taxpayers. As an example, right now, it's just under $200 a day when a young person ends up in Children's Village. To come to Youth Assistance, we have a $25 processing fee. If I send a kid on the jail tour, it's $50, and if I ask them to do a substance abuse survey, it's going to be $10. So both in terms of the cost to the family and the cost to the taxpayer, it's a much more cost-effective, and I would like to think emotionally effective program that keeps them from going through the system if they don't need to. I guess the last point I'd like to stress, because I've been doing this for so long, and I've been in a few communities, I've been in Madison Heights for three years now, and able to work with a few of you directly, is there is no separating the volunteers from the program. Without the volunteers, we don't exist. The volunteers know the community, they're able to help someone like me, the caseworker, identify the needs, and then develop programs for that community that are going to meet the needs in that community, and then we can implement the program. You know, right now, we have what's called a We Are Family Recreation and Family Education Committee, two cheerpeople. And one of them is focusing on recreation opportunities to help families make time to still play with each other, to make those ties a priority, to remember how to have fun together. And then we have an education piece that will work on bringing different education programs, whether it be some yoga programs, maybe into the school to help the staff there, teach the kids how to calm themselves down, how to focus, a substance abuse prevention program. The nice thing about Youth Assistance is it's not a kick each other approach, we can get as creative as we need to be. While there's a lot of consistency across communities, there's also a lot of individualized programming that happens in response to those communities' needs. And that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, if you have any...
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
I would like to point out how effective Deborah Lindsey has been in restoring our Youth Assistance to an active committee. We have some wonderful people on those committees, and I know that you rely on heavily on them, and they do what they're supposed to do, and help you, which, but you are far superior to any other director I've worked with, and I want to thank you for all your dedication and your compassion at the same time. For anybody who needs help, because you are always there, thank you again for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to thank Youth Assistance as well, because you had your first Grinch Christmas storytelling, right? And that was fantastic. And I happen to be the Grinch, believe it or not. So can you imagine a 6'6" Grinch walking up to the kids? But it was a fantastic time. Thank you very much for asking me, I'll do it again, it was a lot of fun, so.
I'd just like to comment that there are a couple of kids who would like the Grinch to come to the house and hide the candy canes, I was told.
No.
And a lot of people I talked to, a lot of the kids are very excited about it and can't wait to do it next year.
Any other comments from council? All right, is there a motion to receive and file the report from Youth Assistance?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein?
Second.
Any discussion to receive and file the report from Madison Heights Youth Assistance? All right, no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, motion carries. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is in the agenda under A1, it's special approval 1806 regarding 29101 John R., BJ's Wholesale Club. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Special approval has been requested by BJ's Wholesale Club at 29101 John R., and for the public, that's the former Kmart site located at 12 Mile and John R. Special approval is required to allow outdoor seating, fuel cells, and motor vehicle light repair in this B2 district. Special approval is not required for any other aspect of the warehouse facility, and is not the subject of this request. The site plan calls for a creation of an outlot, which requires a parcel split to accommodate a future fast food restaurant with outdoor seating. The proposed outdoor seating meets existing and proposed standards. Should this request be approved, the applicant is aware that a parcel split will be required to accommodate the proposed restaurant site. A motor vehicle repair and fuel cells components of the request meet applicable design standards. The landscaping plan also meets ordinance requirements. The proposed hours of operation for the fueling station are Monday through Sunday, 6:30 a.m. to 10 p.m., and the proposed hours of operations for the warehouse, club, and auto service are Monday through Sunday from 9:00 to 10:00. The, 9:00 a.m., I should clarify, to 10:00 p.m. The restaurant is proposed to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The applicant submitted a traffic impact study, which was reviewed by the city's Traffic Safety Committee, or TSC. The applicant's met with the TSC to address the review comments and plans, and have been revised to address the issues. Please note that the applicant has agreed to participate in the cost of a new right-turn lane from eastbound 12 Mile Road to southbound John R., should the city be able to secure the necessary property. The proposed building facade is 39 feet high. The maximum height allowed in a B2 district is 30 feet. The applicant is aware that a variance will be required from the zoning board of appeals to accommodate this proposed height. Should city council approve the special approval request, application to the ZBA is required for this variance. The site plan review committee has reviewed the plan, and all review comments have been addressed. Should the city council approve this request, the following conditions are recommended. Number one, administrative approval of the land division for restaurant parcel. Two, no bump and paint repair work would be permitted. Three, the ZBA approval of the proposed building height variance. And four, the agreement of the 12 Mile Road right-turn lane cost participation agreement.
Okay, before there's any motions from city council, we open a public hearing first on this item. So there's a public hearing, it's now open. If anyone from the public would like to address specifically special approval 1806 regarding 29101 John R., would anyone from the public, or perhaps the applicant, like to make any comments? It's a public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Tim Ponton, I am with Stonefield Engineering and Design. We were retained on this project as the civil engineer and the site designer.
Good evening.
So as many of you know, and was just stated, this is the location at the northwest corner of 12 Mile and John R., the former Kmart site, that went dark at some point between seven and 10 years ago, and we're looking to revitalize this development and bring a potential great new opportunity to Madison Heights, as there is a large retail wholesaler. They are a club that's called BJ's Wholesale. They're a very large company located primarily on the east coast, their headquarters are in Massachusetts, they are starting to move towards the Midwest. They have approximately 220 clubs in 20 states. They are shopping now, some sites in Michigan, this would be either the first or the second site and location, depending on how fast we can, we can move in. Just for anybody that's not familiar with, with the BJ's Wholesale Club, it's comparable locally to a Costco or Sam's Club. We are in front of you guys tonight, as the criteria requires special land use, as an accessory use, we are looking for fueling along with a light repair, which is the tire center. The tire center will be located along the northern side of the site, and the fueling station will actually be located in between the existing shopping center and the BJ's building. So it's not like one of these huge canopies that's visible from the corner that's looking for pass-by traffic. You do have to be a member of the club to utilize the fueling station and the tire center, so it is going to be people that are very familiar with the traffic patterns that exist on-site today. We will be adding over 75 trees to the site, 250 shrubs, changing out the lighting to have LED lighting to eliminate light pollution, and in addition, we'll be providing significant amount of stormwater management improvements to reduce the overall peak discharge rates and the stormwater detention volumes on-site. In terms of the height for the ZBA, we are aware that we'll seek their approval. It is worth noting that 30 feet is allowed. If you can take a look at the screen, the majority of the building is actually at 29 feet, with the exception of just the breezeway or the entrance, which we're proposing at 39 feet. We've had a number of discussions with your planning department and the traffic safety committee, and adhere to all of their comments. We're also adding some special signage on-site to relocate as much traffic to Dartmouth as we can, as that was constructed, to relieve some of the traffic associated with 12 Mile and John R. We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I saw the project will be built in phases, can you explain just the timeline of, you know, when ground will be broken and what the development?
Absolutely. In a best-case scenario, assuming that we obtain your approval and also from the zoning board of adjustment, we'll be ready to break ground on the BJ's development in the spring, the fast food restaurant potentially as well. However, the developer is still trying to finalize who that will be, and exactly what a fast food restaurant will go at that location. And then in regards to the remainder of the center, that will happen in a second phase, we're calling it 1B right now, and the other one 1A. That would happen in a, in a second phase, as they're looking to move as fast as possible on the BJ's development, and we don't want the other portion of it to hold us up. But anything that would happen on the other portion of the shopping center would be required to go in front of the planning department and potentially the city council if required. What I can tell you is that I did ask the developer if he has done anything over there, and he said that he hung some Christmas lights up, so.
The timing for the restaurant, are you going to break ground on the restaurant at the same time as the warehouse?
That would be the goal, except for the warehouse is locked in and ready to go, and the restaurant user is not at this, at this point, so.
Okay.
On our side, we're ready to move as fast as possible, but on the tenant's side, there would still have to be a deal that's finalized, is my understanding.
All right, it's still, still the public hearing, we don't have any motion yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Corbett?
If I could just ask a question?
Yeah, please.
The 10-foot differential in the height between the bulk of the facility and, I couldn't tell, looking at them, is it just aesthetic, is it just in keeping with the logo, or the branding, rather, or?
Yeah, exactly. If you kind of notice, all of the big box users now, you can see it zoomed in a little bit more, but all the kind of local, the Home Depot, Lowe's, Costco, they have this little wall that they use for branding, so to speak, and that's actually when you walk in, where all the carts are stored and things like that.
I have a question, excuse me, I have a question. You were talking about the two phases, there's the warehouse, restaurant, what is the second phase?
So if you remember, the shopping center had the Kmart, and then it has a connected shopping center, so we're actually going to cut that building right where the existing shopping center is not, not the Kmart portion, we're going to demolish just the Kmart.
Okay.
And keep the rest of the shopping center as-is, and we're hopeful that as we at least modify and improve this corner tremendously, that we'll be able... the restaurant user is not at this, at this point, so. On our side, we're ready to move as fast as possible. But on the tenant's side, there would still have to be a deal that's finalized, is my understanding.
Right, it's still the, still the public hearing. We don't have any motion yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Corbett?
If I could just ask a question?
Yeah, please.
The 10-foot differential in the height between the bulk of the facility and the I couldn't tell looking at them. Is it just aesthetic? Is it just in keeping with the, the local, or the branding rather, or?
Yeah, exactly. If you kind of notice, all of the big box users now, you can see it zoomed in a little bit more, but all the kind of local, the Home Depot, Lowe's, Costco, they have this little wall that they use for branding, so to speak. And that's actually when you walk in where all the carts are stored and things like that.
Okay.
I have a question. Excuse me, I have a question. You were talking about the two phases. There's the warehouse, restaurant. What is the second phase?
So if, if you remember, the shopping center had the Kmart and then it has a connected shopping center. So we're actually going to cut that building right where the existing shopping center is not, not the Kmart portion. We're going to demolish just the Kmart.
Okay.
And keep the rest of the shopping center as is. And we're hopeful that as we at least modify and improve this corner tremendously, that we'll be able to bring some really good tenants into the rest of the shopping center.
So you're just, you're getting rid of that. It's going to be vacant until such time as you find tenants?
No, my understanding is that whoever is operating in there today is going to continue operating in there, that there's not going to be any modifications. It's not part of this application.
With the fuel, that's gas pumps. How many are you looking at?
There's six pumps overall, so 12 fueling stations.
And they are, I'm trying to visualize this and I drove by and I've, I've been looking at that. So walk me through this. On 12 Mile is, there's the smoothie place.
Right.
And then there's another, there's a few others.
Ten stations on the other end, right?
Right. And then what we all call Kmart. This is where BJ's is going to be.
Right.
The gas station, the, the pumps will be behind.
They'll be in between those two buildings. I don't want to direct you away from me, but it might be easier if you'd understand if you, so the BJ's.
Where the, where the garden center is.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay. So if I understand correctly, it's, you're going to pull in, the, it, the smoothie place has a drive-through.
Right.
And when the people are there, they're going to be watching people pumping gas? It's going to be right there? Is that?
If you're in the drive-through for the tropical smoothie, you're going to be located, the menu board is actually located all the way to the top of this drawing. So if you're waiting in line to get your smoothie or your food, you actually may be headed toward looking at John R.
I very much appreciate that you're putting the pumps behind, if I understand this right. But now I'm thinking, I don't understand this. So I'm, I'm assuming that you have gone through the city and you have seen Sam's Club and the Costco.
Yeah.
So Costco has their gas pumps. They're kind of hidden. You have to go looking for it. Sam's Club has it right on John R.
Right.
So if I'm at 12 Mile or John R., will I see your pumps?
If you're at John R. and specific portions, just where there's a break in the line of sight, you might see the pump. And if you're, that's, you see the, kind of the, the sight lines from 12 Mile Road there? Because there's now going to be a restaurant building and you have that whole existing shopping center also along 12 Mile. If you're along John R., you'll only see the side facade.
Okay.
The one smaller side facade, but it's also located, let's see, almost 250 feet away from, from the roadway.
Okay, you stated that you have about 220 stores throughout the country in 20 states.
Yes.
And of those, I believe it was 216, but of those, about 130 of them have the gas stations?
Just to make it clear, I'm not a BJ's representative.
Okay.
But I'm the civil engineer.
Okay. Is there a BJ's representative here? Okay, thank you.
I do know that, that a lot of their, their previous and older sites did not have the fueling, but as things started progressing in the marketplace, if you remember even a lot of the Costco and Sam's Club and Krogers, Myers, all of them, the, the older stores did not have gas, but a lot of the new, the newer stores, they have that requirement to be competitive in a marketplace with so many other big box retailers that are, that have that offering. So their main goal is convenience, the one-stop shop for everything.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
No, go ahead.
May I ask the petitioners some questions as well?
Of course.
Your name is, did you say Ponton?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you for being here. I wanted to know what the traffic pattern would be for people waiting in line for the gas pumps. Do you have any knowledge of how they plan to do that?
I do, so.
Would they pull in and face the south?
No, they'll actually pull in and they'll face, they'll face away from the building.
That would be south?
Yeah, yes, they'll be facing south.
Okay.
They'll pull in and they'll circulate around and they'll face 12 Mile Road.
That's what I meant.
But it's a building.
And how many people can you accommodate in line in each one of those pumps?
We can accommodate at least three cars in each one of those pumps. So that's up to 36 to 40 vehicles before anybody ever backs up.
All right. And if there's an excess amount of people in line, where would that excess group of cars go? Where, where they would be positioning to be next in line?
There's still a two-way drive aisle that you could traverse in between each one, but essentially there's going to be an attendant that works it, that is bringing people into the appropriate queuing area. There's, there's a little small, tiny little shack building under the canopy in the middle where the, the attendant would be to bring people in line. The BJ's national standard is actually 40 feet for the overall stacking depth. The traffic safety committee did have some of the same concerns that you're bringing up and we then shifted the canopy about 30 to 40 feet further away from the building to accommodate for some more stacking.
Okay. And also, I know you're asking for a 39-foot elevation. Do you plan to have a second floor, a walkable second floor, or where there are people, will the employees be up there or any other functions going on?
No.
But there will be a second floor?
No.
With stairs?
No, there's no second floor.
Okay, all right. That's what I thought I was trying to figure out. This was a very good, and it looked like they had done a very good traffic study, too. So hopefully they understand the way the traffic goes in that area and they'll be able to route them around. So there's hopefully less congestion than more. Hoping for that.
Yeah, that's the goal. You know, one of the, the good things with this type of user at this type of intersection is that it's not generally relying on passerby traffic. It's more of a destination for local people and they will get very familiar with a lot of the traffic patterns as opposed to using the, the closest driveway. So we do feel with some of the signage that we've added on site and directions towards Dartmouth that should people have, they're going to go to the store the first time, they might be still trying to figure it out. But as they go there a second, a third, a fourth time, they're going to realize really fast, the fastest way to get to Dartmouth and then out of some of the more challenging traffic patterns. Because we know it's 12 and John R.'s has a lot of traffic.
Yes.
And Dartmouth was designed essentially to take some of the traffic off of that road. So we are trying to, and that's why I'm saying this is a great type of use for this corner because it is people that are going to be very familiar with the site and reuse it time and time again.
Right. Question to the city manager. Would there be, or could we put in an requirement that there would be a traffic study review after a certain period of time that could review the traffic there and ways progressing?
I would defer that to Jim Schaefer. I'm not sure how we.
Okay.
Would enforce that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That would be very problematic to require them to come back and modify. They have submitted a very detailed traffic study that was put through our traffic safety committee and they have addressed all the comments. We actually met with them for quite a period of time to go through all of these issues. One thing to keep in mind, the, there's been a lot of discussion about the, the gas station and the, the traffic patterns on site. The traffic study, that is not what that focuses on. The traffic study focuses on the public road network.
Okay.
All right, we did include in that conversation both the site plan review as well as traffic safety, the stacking issues, and passed on our local knowledge to the BJ's folks regarding our experience at both Costco and Sam's Club and the additional stacking. And that's why they modified, basically doubling their national corporate standard. We do not have a specific standard here at the city. It's a flexible one, just requires that they provide adequate storage. But just to bear in mind that if there are backups, those backups will be on Kmart's, or excuse me, BJ, the BJ property. And, and again, that would be an issue just like Costco and Sam's Club have made on-site adjustments to address volumes at peak periods. The same thing would stand for a, a corporation like this.
But based on what you've studied with the warehouse employees, you feel that pretty confident that the traffic pattern will work out so that it's, you know, not hugely congested at points? Jim?
Mr. Mayor, which, which traffic patterns are we referring to?
Any ingress or egress type things?
The ingress and egress absolutely will be impacted. The, the traffic study, one of the things that it pointed out is that there are substantial traffic issues at 12 and John R. with the Kmart center dark. So it's obviously going to have a substantial impact on traffic volumes in terms of turning movements at that intersection. We're going from a site that is generating virtually no traffic to a site that will be generating substantial traffic volumes. So there's no doubt there's going to be an impact. The focus of our effort was on mitigating that, reducing it. So you see the, the recommendations of the traffic safety committee to extend the southbound John R. right turn lane substantially further to the north. What that does is that gets your westbound 12 Mile traffic out of the southbound John R. lanes and it moves the back of the traffic up. And then also, if we can secure the land area, we were going to, again, attempt to get a right turn lane from eastbound 12 Mile to southbound John R. Same reasoning, a large amount of the volume at that intersection, we can push the rear end of that waiting pattern to the east if we can get the right turn folks out of the right lane. And the only way to accomplish that is through a right turn lane itself. And they've agreed to participate in that. But back to your original, there absolutely will be increased congestion at John R. and 12 Mile. There's no way about that.
Now with the right turn lane, the, that's coming from eastbound, I'm sorry, that's going eastbound on 12 Mile, would there be any need to take some of that land away where the gas station is?
Yes, look, both the Red Lobster and the gas station. And that's why you'll see in the agreement, it's worded very, it's essentially the same as what we attempted at first with Lowe's. This is not a new idea, but we are going to once again attempt to put it in, but it will necessitate an area where we have to take land from two different properties. We do have design plans already in place because the city has designed this a number of years ago to try to accomplish this on our own.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Schaefer, I have a question for you then. You're saying it's the Red Lobster and the existing gas station would be giving up property for this right lane?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. Has there been a discussion with either of them yet?
Not yet, no. We would pursue that in accordance with the agreement. We would go and have that discussion with them if this gets approved. Then we would go and have that conversation with them and if we could not secure it, it does not occur.
Would it be the entire property or just portion or, do you even know that at this point?
Mr. Mayor, yes. Excuse me. We have very specific design plans that were drawn up previously a number of years ago. We've made several inroads on this to see if we could see this occur. And it would not eliminate either one. It would be a, a small portion of the frontage. Both sites would maintain their existing driveway patterns and so on. It would, it's just a sliver of land that is needed to get the width for the, for the turn lane.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one other aspect to the question of the 12 Mile and John R. There's also one other big thing despite how it seems this evening or how it seems right now. Some day 696 is going to get finished. Maybe in my lifetime, but when it does, I'm going to assume that's going to have an impact also on the, on the 12 Mile traffic. And so I, I think between the increased traffic turning into your center, I don't know that it'll be completely offset, but I would assume that diverting some of that traffic to 696 would have to have an impact. Yes.
That was a question?
Yeah, yeah, what's your question, Mark?
Mr. Mayor, yes. The, we have noted substantial traffic volume increases not only in Madison Heights but in adjacent communities on all the mile roads and all of the north-south routes as folks watch their Google Maps instead of following detours to try to get around the traffic pattern. So right now, this past year was substantially increased volumes at all of our major intersections and, and 12 and John R. was one of the worst.
Tim, right? I'm sorry, what's your last name again?
Ponton. P-O-N-T-O-N.
Thank you, Mr. Ponton. I, I know, I know you're the engineer hired by BJ's. Are you aware of who the general contractor will be for, for any of these phases?
I don't think that's been selected at this point in time.
No, okay. Have you worked with BJ's before?
I have. My headquarters are located out of New Jersey and I have an office locally, so we've been working with BJ's for a number of years.
Oh, great connection. Do you know if they use local general contractors and local workers?
They will be so. The, the owner of, of the parcel is not going to be BJ's, but it is somebody that's local. It's a local team that acquired the property. They will be responsible for doing all the site work and all the site improvements and do use local companies, two or three different general contractors they generally work with. And then BJ's, I believe, will be responsible for the building in which they would probably ask us to recommend three or four people that they would bid out locally as well.
Could you go back, I'm sorry, could you go back to the timing? You, you said BJ's could be ready in the spring. What, what does that mean? Like?
As soon as the sun comes out and the ground thaws from the winter and assuming we have all of our approvals, which we should at that point, we'd be ready to start construction.
Okay. I mean, that's demolition as well? Or would you do demolition now during the winter?
It's a better question for the landowner. I think provided that he had obtained the proper approvals, I'm sure he would like to demolish the building as fast as possible.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think Mr. Mayor had a good point. Because I was also interested in that. I'm a little disappointed that a representative is not here, but you said that they're going to reach out to local construction companies, but I, I would like to see, take it a, a step further.
Just to clarify, the, the new landowner is here and the applicant is here. It's just not a BJ's representative.
BJ's representative is not here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, welcome. What's your name?
Nicholas Moshuris.
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 Welcome.
M-O-S-C-H-O-U-R-I-S.
Welcome.
And my address is 28454 Woodward Avenue, Royal Oak.
Thank you. And what's your affiliation?
I'm one of the principals.
Oh, okay. Of the landowner?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So we, we have, we, just so you guys know, we've already started the asbestos abatement on, in the Kmart building. So, and then, yeah, assuming we get approvals, the plans would be to start demolition. We have two contractors, two local contractors. One actually is the Allen Group and the other one was DA Contracting. And the Allen Group, I believe, is in actual, is, is in Madison Heights. So we will be using local trades for that.
Yeah, I, in fact, I was hoping, because you are, we do appreciate you redeveloping this and there's a lot of construction, it sounds like. But I, I was hoping maybe you could consider the prevailing wage contracts where you utilize more the labor unions' trades skills.
So for the, the site, site work, they, they do pay wages, prevailing wages, but it's not, we're not specified whether it's union or not. And one other thing to note is that the, I believe, it was your question regarding the, the rest of the center. So our architects are, they've given us two proposals as far as new facade renovation. So that entire phase two will be a complete facade renovation as, and we have interest of numerous tenants ever since it was announced in Crane's little preliminary about BJ's selecting Madison Heights and Taylor as two of the sites that they wanted to be in.
Thank you for, for that. So I just want to clarify, the, you represent the company that has bought the land and BJ's is your tenant?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that, I know that some of my questions, I think, would be better geared towards BJ's. I have a question about the gas pumps and about charging ports for electric vehicles. Would you be able to comment on that?
Alternative fu- fuel vehicles.
That I, that I don't think there's, there's, some of their locations, they do require a parking space or two for compact vehicles and the potential for charging stations if the market dictates in that area the proper number of vehicles.
Okay. So I, I don't know of any charging stations in the city that, that the public can go and charge at. I do not believe that Costco and Sam's Club have those in the city. And I don't- I don't know that we necessarily need more gas pumps in the city. And I'm just wondering if BJ's is open to putting in the charging stations. You're talking about planting the trees and the shrubs, which is great, and LED lighting, which is wonderful. But what about the next step with the charging stations? And I don't know that either of you are in a position to answer questions about that.
I can't answer that, but I mean, it's something definitely that we're willing to take back to them and ask them.
Okay, I just-
Just from a site design standpoint, and with this being 12 and John R. and us talking about a specific amount of traffic and a deliberate user that we want coming here, we would have to talk probably with a handful of people to see if this is the location that we want people, the public, to locally come and charge their vehicles or not. But I think it's an amazing idea.
Well, I'm wondering if it might not even be something that BJ's does, but it's something that the landowner looks at doing. You know, as has been mentioned, as everybody in the city knows, 12 Mile has been getting a lot of extra traffic because of 696. And people who are driving electric vehicles are having an anxiety, you know, anxiety over range. And if we have charging stations that they can use at 12 Mile and John R., that benefits everybody. So I would be interested to know, again, I don't know if it's BJ's or if it's the landowner. But at this point in time, I would rather see charging stations or see charging stations with the gas pumps.
And again, that's something that we can bring back to them, but that's not, that's the approved, the plan that's in place was something that was approved by them. And we would have to, we would have to take that back to them.
Yeah, just from what I was looking at, and I understand what you were saying earlier about their original stores didn't have the gas, they added them on. But there's about 60% of their stores that have them. And I'm just wondering why we can't be one that's like that, or even better, be on the forefront and offer the electric vehicle charging. It's a thought.
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Just a question on landscaping. Could you go over some of the additions and the investments that you'll be making in the landscaping, the additional trees that you put? Anything above our standards in the city? You know, what are you doing above and beyond? I think that's worth highlighting.
Yeah, so we will be tripling overall the amount of green space on site. We're proposing over 75 trees and 250 shrubs. We're proposing a lemon greens layer and a red maple orange drum along with the red maple brandy wine. So you can see right now that the parking lot is somewhat of a sea of asphalt. So we're going through and adding in all those landscape islands on site there and adding trees into there. Along with that, there's some perimeter and street frontage trees that will be provided at the site as well. In addition, you know, another big measure that I discussed was the implementation of the stormwater management regulations will be required to store the 10-year storm on site as well.
Were there any curb cuts being eliminated through this? Did you have a discussion about that? Or maybe even adding them?
We, yeah, we always take a look at the access. And as we discussed, the place in Vandenberg had performed a study, and the spacing of the driveways located along John R. and 12 Mile are adequate and proper for this type of development. But what we tried to do was improve them however we could. So the main adjustment that we're making is along John R. will be adding an entire right turn lane. And then along the other roadway, as we discussed, we, the only thing, we have our hands tied, but we are willing to participate a big sum of money towards the implementation of the right turn lane, should the city be able to acquire that land. And we have been going back and forth with our contracts with the city attorneys prior to this meeting for that.
That seems like a really uncertain contingency, how we, how we, the city will acquire that private land. Could someone explain just the legal process to acquire that private land?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, we use the same process here that we utilized for the Lowe's project. Lowe's included the entire Dartmouth Ring Road. And in that development agreement, one component of the development agreement was almost essentially the same wording of this, to attempt to secure that land area without going through an actual condemnation process. So this would be, we would approach the property owners and try to negotiate for that area because this will also benefit them, because it will clear out the traffic in front of their properties fairly substantially.
Yeah, there seems to be something different about the nature of the taking or the agreement with the existing Marathon gas station. I mean, to add a right turn lane will significantly impact their business. I mean, it looks like we're, like we're demolishing one gas station to benefit another company.
No, Mr. Mayor, they're not at all. This is a small strip of land in front of the station to accommodate a small portion of the right turn lane. Their two access drives will be maintained, sidewalk will be maintained. It will not impact their operation.
Oh, okay.
The plans are already designed. As I indicated several, numerous years ago, we attempted to do this, and so we actually had the design plans drawn up.
So the location of the sidewalk won't change? I was imagining we're going 20 feet into the existing property line.
Mr. Mayor, it will shift to the south slightly. I don't have the plans with me, but the, but the drives are maintained, the gas pump locations are maintained.
Okay. There's something about the timing that we haven't talked to them first. It seems like it would be smart to talk to those impacted private landowners. I mean, what's the thought of not talking to them now?
We're following the same process that we followed for the Lowe's. And actually, prior to that, when we went and discussed with them, if this project does not transpire or exist, then it's not something that we would necessarily be pursuing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I agree with you. I'm leery to approve something based on the possibility that we will be able to purchase this land and do this extra lane. We approve this, and then we don't have that, and then we end up with all these extra traffic issues. Could we postpone this vote until we get some answers?
I mean, I, I'm okay with postponing. I, special approval, that is. I mean, of course, all the things that don't require special approval can go ahead. But, Mr. Schaefer, I like your optimism that the city can reach a mutual agreement with those private landowners on the south side of 12 Mile. But I'm just worried, I would hate for the city to have to go through a public taking action. I mean, aggressively take public, or private property. I mean, it'd be nice if we, I could have some assurance that those private landowners on the south side of 12 are amenable to this plan.
Mr. Mayor, there is no assurance, nor am I saying that I'm optimistic or pessimistic. The position that we're taking here is that the traffic study, just like the Lowe's traffic study identified this as an existing problem, that they were going to add traffic to. Lowe's, we were not successful in securing the land, and so we did not install the turn lane. And Lowe's did not contribute any money towards the construction of that turn lane. And Lowe's is built, and we sit with no turn lane. We are attempting to do the same thing in this instance, and we would follow that same course of action and seek to get the voluntary dedication of that land. I have never mentioned to these folks, and I would not say that we would be taking a condemnation action over this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Please, Tim.
Trying to stay out of too many of the details with engineering, but what the traffic study states is that with or without this taking and with or without this development, that this roadway network is going to operate under the same level of service. And it operates under a level of service D, which is an acceptable level of service. Even with that right turn lane, we're, I guess, we've been asked to contribute, should the city and the county be able to obtain that. And we said, of course, we're willing to contribute to that. But what I don't want to confuse is that something to be developed at this location is solely dependent on that right turn lane. Because if you actually go through and you look at all the studies of the intersection of 12 and John R., they're requiring a lot of other different things to operate at a level of service that's different. So to change it from a level of service D to a level of service C is going to require significant changes to this intersection, which would be, have to be dictated regionally by the county, the regional roadways. So even though we are saying locally, and I would never tell the neighbors that this isn't going to create so much more traffic, because everybody gets really mad at me when I say that, what I can say is that it's not going to change the traffic pattern significantly. During the peak hour on Saturdays, it's going to have a slight impact. So maybe if you waited three minutes before, you're going to wait four minutes, or there might be one additional light change. But there are enough gaps in the traffic in all of the traffic scenarios, with the exception of the weekend peak. That is the biggest problem with this intersection. So I guess, what I don't want to happen is that to lose an opportunity to have a great tenant here. The next thing that I can tell you is when we did the traffic study, we assumed a full shopping center. So we put a fast food user at the corner, we put the BJ's development in there, and then we also put LA Fitness in there, for example. And not that we have them secured, but we said, let's run this analysis as if this whole entire shopping center is operational. And it still didn't change the level of service to a worse level of service. So again, this is just the first part of this. Maybe it's a discussion that comes up the next time we have to come in front of you for Phase Two, should, I mean, you brought up something, hey, can we make them do a study after they're operating for some amount of time? I think the second bite of the apple really is when we have to come back for something.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just to, not to put too fine a point on it, there is a need at that intersection for a right turn lane right now.
Oh, sure.
With that shopping center half empty. Whether we agree to put BJ's in there or not, that isn't going to change. The only difference is, if we're able to get the land, they'll kick in some of the money for the turn lane. But there is no connection between whether BJ goes on that site and whether they, there's a turn lane put in and whether it's necessary. Those are, those are separate questions.
All right, there's kind of like a bifurcated procedural process that BJ's is working with the city. On one hand, many of what BJ's wants to do is fully allowed. You don't even need to talk to a city council. You just go ahead and build. However, tonight, there's those few minor, maybe not minor, but few exceptions that require city council approval. Are you able to proceed on the other stuff if council waits a couple weeks for follow-up questions?
Unfortunately, we're not able to proceed at this development. As they're entering into a new market, which is the Midwest, to go and be competitive with a lot of the other big box retailers, they want to offer all the services and have the comfort level and confidence that they're going to be able to offer those services to come and spend millions and millions of dollars at a specific location.
Your Honor?
Yes. So I'm a little, I'm a little hazy on the restaurant itself. We were saying fast food restaurant, is it a faster service? I mean, there's outdoor dining, but I don't know what that implication is, and it doesn't seem like that tenant has been figured out. So I'm a little weary about that. But I think the location of the gas station on this site is a really strong one. When we look at some of the other retail tenants in the city with gas stations, they're typically right off the roadway, they are an eyesore, you know, things like, you know, the Meyer one or Sam's Club. And so this, I like where the gas station is put. And I personally wouldn't want to hold up this development because I do think it's going to be good for the city to be able to get some investment on that corner after so many years of that site sitting vacant. So I would, I would be personally in favor, and I will be voting in favor to move forward tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just one point on the, on the gas pumps. I'm pretty neutral on gas pumps. I personally think we could probably do it less as a general rule, nothing personal. But I mean, if you're going to have a competitive site in this day and age, then you're going to have a competitive site. The only thing I would point out to you curiously at this site, they're on the going-to-work side. They are on the way to 75. So candidly, they probably are not even going to, they're not going to cut into the guy across the street's gas. Those are two very different things. If you're, if you're coming home on fumes, you're not going to cross over, you're going to go to the marathon. Conversely, if you need gas to get to work, that's the one you're going to, and that's the right side. So my point is, is that no contact, no follow.
Only per members, too.
Well, yes, and that limits the, that limits the attraction of the site, too. So I don't want to get accused of justifying gas pumps, but in this case, it's fairly innocuous and pretty convenient, given the location, as gas pumps go.
I mean, so when, kind of just made the argument, Tim, that, you know, time is of the essence, let's get moving. When is the earliest that we'll see a wrecking ball? I mean, are you going to see it in 2018?
2018?
Yeah, just the last two weeks of the year.
Say as soon as we obtain approval from this board and zoning board of appeals, then you'll see, I don't know if it'll be a wrecking ball, but something.
Yeah, right. When does zoning board of appeals meet next?
First Monday of January.
First Monday?
Thursday, Thursday, sorry, first Thursday of-
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, no. This would be, the earliest they could get on would be February.
Unless they paid for a special meeting.
The advertising timeframes are driving that.
Oh, so it's pretty tight.
So you said, they're not going to lift a finger until all the approvals are, you know, all the ink's dried at City Hall, everything is tied up. Then they'll lift a finger and start. But you're not going to see the zoning board till February?
Well, a couple things. I'm not, certainly not saying that no one's lifting any fingers.
Okay.
What's happening is a lot of the asbestos testing and the asbestos abatement on the inside is occurring right now. You just can't see it from the street, unfortunately. So they are spending a significant amount of money on cleaning up this building to be ready to be demolished. Because even if we said, let's get the wrecking ball out there tomorrow, unfortunately, the utility companies and MDEQ don't allow us to do that. But we are moving on the right track to get that done. There's a lot of work that goes into that. Mr. Mayor?
I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great development. I'm not attacking the development.
Yeah.
And of course, I trust the experts of BJ's and the engineer office and the landowner who've studied the market very carefully over, you know, months and years of your career. And it seems like it's a smart business decision. And I feel confident that your expertise will imply and almost guarantee a success for this site. But I'm just worried about how it affects, not competition, I'm not trying to protect another business, but I was just more concerned about the private property rights. And I'm just trying to see if there's any wiggle room of time to get more question, to get more feedback from those adjacent property owners.
If I may, while you think about that, I have some wonderful members of the public that keep looking at me, telling me they want to say something. So I don't know when that time is, but, and I don't know if they're for it or against it, but.
Well, it's, you know, technically, this is still the public hearing. We haven't even had a motion. So Tim and Nick, you've been very helpful. But if anyone else from the public, you can get in line behind these gentlemen. Please come on up, if you'd like to give us your name.
My name is Donna Darling, and I live at 302 Gary, 30294 Gary Avenue. And I was in Virginia over the holidays, and I got to go to one of these places. And they're not only attractive, they're very, very nice. And I think it would really be, I mean, I don't know about zoning and all that kind of stuff, but I think it would be a blessing to our city to get that eyesore out of there.
Oh, of course. Oh, of course.
And it's a great place. It really, really is. And this is just, that's just a picture. They're beautiful. They really add something to us. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzie Patton, and I live at 30472 Eldrick. In regards to the traffic at 12 Mile, as a citizen, I want to let you know that I avoid 12 Mile and John R., not because of the right lane, but because of the left lane. Trying to make a left-hand turn, that's where I think it backs up. And I don't know who controls the lights, but I think that could be improved.
Welcome back, Crystal.
Hi, my name is Crystal Fox. I'm at 28474 Hales in Madison Heights. I just wanted to make a suggestion if we are, and I appreciate all of the added landscaping, if we could make those native plants, plants that are native to Michigan, that would really help with the insect population and birds in Michigan. So just a suggestion.
Yep, thank you. We're still on this public hearing for BJ's. Yes, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Brian Nager with Nager Companies. And I represent 100 to 200 West 12 Mile. That entity is called Madison Plaza LLC, where the Tropical Smoothie is located and several other tenants. So we have, we have looked at this, this former Kmart for a long time. I think we can all agree that that thing is an eyesore and that this, this BJ's would be, you know, a welcome to the area, the neighborhood, you know, Madison Heights. So we are, you know, we're in full support of this. We think it's, it's going to be a great, great project. And we, we just wanted to come up here to voice some of our concerns. One, it's my understanding that they've been back and forth with the city, with the planners in, in designing and redesigning that fuel station. I'm not sure still how that would work, but I'm sure that's, that's been something that's been gone over with the planner and, you know, the appropriate parties. So assuming that the stacking is, is good and has been properly addressed, we shouldn't see any of that impacting the neighboring property, which is us. So we're happy about that. The major concern for us is the, the corner parcel, the fast food restaurant. The problem there becomes, by adding the fuel station to, to BJ's, there's been 22 spaces eliminated from that, from that back area behind the shopping center, which would be at the top left of, of the, of the picture. So 22 spaces have been eliminated from there. There is a, a shared parking agreement that goes between, I call them parcels A, B, and C, but I think it's 1A, 1B, and A. A, no, A, whatever, A, B, and C. So 22 spaces have been eliminated there. Not the biggest deal in the world because we also have a row of parking behind the shopping center there, where employees typically park and things like that. The major issue for us becomes the, the outlawed parcel there with the fast food restaurant. We typically, you know, see cars overflowing between the two, you know, between the three properties. You know, sometimes there's 20 to 30 cars parked there. So there is some synergy between the two, and that, that to us becomes a concern. The way the, the parcels were divided, the, that, that actual parcel on the, on the corner there, that, that's the proposed fast food, was actually turned facing north and south on the original, on the original parcel split. So right now, that's been turned to go east-west. And, you know, it just, I, I think that becomes problematic later on when you've got shared parking between the, you know, between the parcels, and all of a sudden, you've got people parking from there, you know, onto our shopping center and vice versa. And I, I think it just becomes problematic. So if there was any way that we could address that or do something about that, that, that would be our major concern. The other one which I've heard brought up today is, is, you know, the, with the, with the other landowners next door, I'm in agreement that that's a separate issue. If there's a right turn lane issue, that's a problem now. Whether BJ's is there or not, I think that's, that's still going to be an issue, and whether that can be resolved, we don't know. But I think it would be wise to talk to those, to those landowners and have some sense of, you know, are they in agreement or not? Are they on board? I mean, if this thing was proposed years ago, I, I would assume that there had, had been some conversations. So it would be wise to, to kind of see what their perspective is. You don't want to, you don't want to add a 12-pump fuel station there and put the other guy out or, or, or affect them, so.
Not much left to say, Brian. My name is Lisa Hamamay, and I'm an attorney at Foster, Swift, Collins &amp; Smith. My office is in Southfield. I represent Madison Plaza LLC and Brian. And as Brian indicated, there's no objection to the use. It's great that you're filling a vacant space. Our concern is, filling this vacant space could, down the road, create another vacant space if Brian's tenants leave because they don't have parking. You know, he has a Weight Watchers in there, and they have certain times of the day where there are a lot of people. And if you look at the way the, the original survey configured those parcels, let's just call Brian's property A, and underneath it, the proposed McDonald's or whatever restaurant it is, we'll call it B, and then the rest is the shopping center. As Brian indicated, B was flipped, and what was between B and A was a ton of parking spaces. And with that gas, with where the gas pumps are now, there were a ton of parking spaces. Both of those adjacent to the, the plaza, and if both of those gone, it's going to significantly impact the practical uses that go into that, that plaza. So that was really our primary concern in the way it's being proposed. Now, if that was flipped back and those parking places remained, then, then that would certainly help, and it would go a long way. Now, I understand Brian did talk to you about the private reciprocal access and parking easement. I understand it's not your place to jump into that agreement, but we certainly wanted to bring it to your attention. There is an agreement in place that allows them to share parking so that everybody has full access to the required parking or the desired parking. The problem with the current configuration is, it, it really frustrates the intent of the agreement because Brian's customers or their tenants' customers are now going to have to park, if you look, and I don't know if you've been to a Costco on a Saturday afternoon, but they're now going to have to park in that parking lot where it's going to be chaos, undoubtedly, and hopefully for the success of the business. But then you're going to have people who want to get to the plaza, and now they're going to have to cross the road and somehow make it to the plaza safely, which is a pedestrian and traffic concern as well. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention. As Brian indicated, this is great for the city, but wanted to make sure you were aware of these other issues. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just ask two quick questions? Mr. Nager? That 20 to 30 cars that you were mentioning that are occasionally pretending that, that's not there, isn't that usually during the day from buses that, that take, that take tourists from there?
It may be from that as well, but no, there, we, several of our, our uses tend to overflow there. I mean, Weight Watchers has classes that, you know, park there. The, the Penn Station is right there during lunchtime, it's, it's busy. You know, I guess, I don't know the legality of it, but if the fast food restaurant decides to throw up signs and, you know, now there's, there's issues with, are we allowed to park there or not? I, I think we are legally, but, you know, BJ's may have the same concerns if our parking is overflowing or, or whatever, that there may be issues there. So those are some things that we just wanted to, see if there was any way that we could mitigate or, I don't know, maybe, maybe that fast food, just for food for thought would be if, if that was pulled forward closer to John R., and then you could have additional parking in the rear. In other words, you drive around that, that fast food site, and there is no row of parking parallel to John R., you pull the building forward and have two rows of parking in the back.
I, yeah, I don't really do a, a lot of this sort of work, but my understanding, and I guess I'd like to involve Mr. Schaefer for a moment. When I first looked at this plan, I, my count was there was more than adequate parking spaces allocated for all the uses, A, B, and C, if you count everything else in the complex. Is, what's, what's, I don't think they're close. What's the situation on total parking for that location?
Mr. Mayor, they're substantially over on parking for the entire development, and each phase is also over.
Well, yeah, well, where I'm going with that is, is that from a government standpoint, obviously, we don't want to create chaos. Or unless it's good chaos, like at Christmas and everybody's running this up. But if a location has adequate number of spaces, and it seems to me, as your attorney mentioned, it's a matter for the tenants to work that out in an agreement. That's not, I mean, if the city is merely concerned that they've got adequate space for public safety, how you all apportion it is between you and, and your attorneys. Isn't that what you guys get paid the big bucks for?
Yes, sir. The only reason it is relevant to some extent is, if you look at the standards and the factors that you were reviewing raising special issues.
Sure.
Which encompass both the gas station and the reconfigured indoor house, the drive-through of the restaurant, you do consider how it would impact pedestrian and traffic circulation in these properties. And that's why I bring it up. Granted, it's one factor of many they look at, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
What, what I also could suggest is, is if you, if you scroll down a little bit on the west side of the property, west of 100 to 200 West.
Other way.
The other way. There is a, a strip there which is just about useless. There's, there's a drive-through lane that butts up against the building, and then there's just
Right.
25, 30 feet of, of pavement. So if you did require a bypass lane there, you'd have the drive-through lane, you have a bypass lane, there is some extra room there that could potentially be, you know, a row of parking, that could be another row of angled parking. I mean, that may be something else to consider. But, but I'm just looking for ways to make the development less congested. And again, total parking, yes, it works. Common sense parking, it's going to be a little difficult with that restaurant on the corner. So again, we are in full support of, of the development of BJ's coming there, and we think it'll be a great use for the city and everybody else. There's just some, you know, some other issues that we are contemplating that we're concerned about. You know, we have been there since 2010. We've done significant work to that shopping center. We've worked really hard
Yes, you have.
To produce an attractive center, bring Class A tenants there. We've got the center 100% full, and this, this should only help. So we, we just want to keep the, the momentum going.
You've brought great tenants. Some of those restaurants are the, the highest sales revenue generating in, in the entire franchise for them. So well done.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Tim, how, written in stone are the dimensions of, of the warehouse? I mean, is it, is it the same 94,000 square foot?
What I was going to say, to kind of hopefully make some people feel better is, the BJ's Wholesale Club is written in stone, to kind of answer your question, and that's the main reason that we're here tonight. The, the restaurant in the corner is, is a bit more conceptual at this point in time, like we previously, previously stated. Mr. Bliss said, you know, there were some questions about the outdoor seating. The only action that this board is required to make on the restaurant aspect tonight is the outdoor seating, and since that is conceptual, we would be willing to pull that back and come in front of your board at a later date, once we, we do have a tenant. But in terms of the BJ's development, we've been working with their team for months and months and months to come up with a, a final plan that works for everybody. What is, what is your first, why do you ask the question?
Someone said, I think I heard it right, they wanted to like squeeze the building. And I think the, the suggestion was to just have more breathing room from the strip mall with Tropical Smoothie Cafe and Penn Station. I think that's what was being implied, is either push the restaurant closer to John R. or somehow get the gas station further away. But I think if you move the gas station, you have to somehow squeeze the warehouse. I mean, those aren't easy things to redraw.
No, but the restaurant, it sounds like the restaurant was originally flipped, which would help alleviate the parking concerns.
I don't, when we're talking about originally, I think they're talking about like the 1950s, but that's neither
I don't know.
Yeah, that's neither here nor there. So this Kmart site is one site today, it's one development. But if I think of, I'm hearing Mr. Nager properly, and he, he is one of the better developers around town, he's, he's stating that some of the parking area where the potential fast food user is, is being impacted, and I think that's more beneficial to him than behind the building, where there's a drive-through lane and some of that traffic. But I think either way, we all know each other and we're in the same community, so we'd be happy to talk to our neighbors following this meeting and go through that reciprocal agreement and try to see if we can figure out some type of rotating of the building or who would occupy that restaurant. But again, at this point, it's conceptual and it's not even worth.
Council can continue this discussion after a motion, but is there any, anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? The public hearing is still open. No one else is asked to be recognized for the public hearing. So is there a motion from council regarding special, the special approval?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
I'll take a swing at something here. I would move that the council grant the approval for the development of the site as proposed and with the recommended restrictions, with one caveat, the reference within the agreement for a restaurant would be for the moment deleted and subject to subsequent action by consulate and the parties. Is that satisfactory to everybody sitting around? Yes, no? I thought this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sherman? So, question of the maker of the motion.
Yes.
So you're moving for special approval to allow fuel sales and motor vehicle light repair in the B2 district with the conditions that relate to those two items as recommended by site plan review?
Yes.
Which would be no bump in paint repair work permitted, ZBA approval of the proposed building height variance, and it would include an agreement for the 12 Mile right turn lane cost participation. That's the proposed agreement.
Yes, basically, B through D.
Is that what your intent is?
Yes, that's my intent.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification on the outdoor seating. The report was very specific to that issue, that should city council approve the amendments that are going through the process right now, outdoor seating without alcohol or entertainment would be a permitted principal use probably in February, roughly, if they get approved. The reasoning behind having that particular situation here was because the, in discussions with the applicants, they wanted to assure that they would have the capability, the outdoor seating. So I don't, I want to make sure everyone is clear on that, however the motion goes, that you would not necessarily see this back as a special approval for outdoor seating if they did not have alcohol or entertainment. It would not necessarily come back as a special approval.
How does that comport with what you were offering, sir?
I, I wasn't aware of that, but it doesn't change anything really on our end.
All right, there's a motion. Mr. Sherman, could you restate what you heard the motion is?
Yeah, the motion would be to grant special approval to allow fuel sales and motor vehicle light repair in a B2 district, conditioned upon no bump in paint repair work permitted, ZBA approval of the proposed building height variance, and an agreement for the 12 Mile right turn lane cost participation. The proposed agreement was attached to your agenda item.
Okay, is there a support for the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Okay, what, may I, your honor? Let's, let's talk a little more here, Jim, on the, on the, on the conditions recommended from site plan at the wording of A, which is what we're talking about here. One of the conditions granted by council would be administrative approval of land division for restaurant parcel. I'm withdrawing that permission from my motion. So am I correct in saying, for the moment, the issue of the restaurant is off the table?
No. If they were to come in tomorrow with a proposal for a restaurant on that parcel, without outdoor seating.
Without outdoor seating?
Correct. They could proceed with a split, and we would review that split in conformance with all of our requirements, and they could proceed.
Mm-hmm.
Now, outdoor seating today requires special approval.
Gotcha.
The amendments that are meandering their way through the system right now, which most likely will see action, depending on council, in January, if those were adopted as they currently sit, on the effective date of those amendments, this special approval would not have been required for outdoor seating at this location, provided that the facility did not have alcohol or out, or entertainment.
Yeah, so, so by withdrawing the use of the outdoor seating at the moment, for, at the moment, buys the space and is, is, he would have to move forward on it. But if this thing drags out to February, then he could come back in, as you say, and make a, a proposal.
Correct. He, he can withdraw
Without the
He can withdraw this for the outdoor seating.
Yeah, but the outdoor seating is really in part picking up some of the space that we're talking about here, right? I, I don't, how much is that taking?
The outdoor seating is actually a very small component of, of this. It's a small front patio-type area. But, but the, the point would be that if they took that away, and I'm not going to speak for the applicants, but if they took that off of the table, and council approved this ordinance amendment that's going through, they could come back with that proposal, and it would not require special approval in approximately two months.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So then, if I understand correctly, basically, the special approval is just for the tire sales and the fuel, because the outdoor seating is going to be nuked in a couple of months.
As is the bulk of the building, now that we're on the subject, but you're right.
Was that directed to me? That, as I understand the motion, yes. But I can't speak for the applicants relative to, you know, whether they would wish to pursue a revision of that special approval, or whether they would wait and see what the amendment process goes through. We've had, we had this conversation with them very early on, telling them that those amendments are going through, so.
I guess, assuming the amendments go through, if we were to be having this meeting about two months in the future after the amendments went through, the, the special seating wouldn't even be on here.
That is correct. You would not see this.
Thank you.
Other discussion from council? All right, then we can, let's see, I'll, I'll review the motion. Yes, please.
Oh, sorry, I did have a comment.
Continue.
I guess, I'm, I'm a bit confused if, if we were to approve this, if we approved this tonight, they still need to go, go to the zoning board, and that's not happening until February. So, I'm not sure what the rush is to approve this tonight, instead of taking a few weeks till our meeting in January, we're not even meeting for another three or four weeks, to get a bit of information back from BJ's. I'm, I'm interested in the gas pumps, and, and if they would be putting in charging stations now that has been brought to their attention. I'm just wondering, I, I guess I'm confused as to why we have to have the vote tonight.
Mr. Mayor, on the, if I might, on the charging stations. Charging stations are typically in parking spaces, and so if BJ's wanted to pursue something like that, there's nothing in our code preventing, in fact, we welcome those, and we, we encourage them, and we have no issues with, with accommodating them. It's essentially an electrical permit that would accommodate a charging station in a parking space. And those parking spaces would not detract from or add to our minimum requirements. A parking space is a parking space. So, that issue could be addressed by BJ's or any other business, for that matter, with an electrical permit and placing of the charging station in an existing space. It wouldn't impact the layout or the design of the project.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other discussion from members of council? All right, I'll restate the motion. It was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Giddings, to partially grant special approval to allow fuel sales and motor vehicle light repair in the B2 district, subject to the following conditions, no bump in paint repair work permitted, ZBA approval of the proposed building height variance, and an agreement for 12-mile road right turn lane cost participation. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
The motion carries. 7-0. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for the participation in that. We can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Tim, for your participation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. The next public hearing is item A2. It's special approval 1807 regarding 32401 Edward, the wireless communication tower. Mrs. Marsh?
Special approval is required to allow construction of a new cell tower in the M1 district at 32401 Edward. The applicants are APC Towers LLC and T-Mobile Central LLC. The tower will be located on leased property. The 75-foot tower is a monopole design, as required and has been co-located space for up to three additional antenna. The proposed tower and site meet all the applicable design and location standards. The site plan review committee has reviewed the plans, and all review comments have been addressed.
Thank you. Before any council action, we open a special hearing on special approval 1807. Welcome, could you please identify yourself?
Sure, my name is Bob Prisvillo. I represent T-Mobile and APC Towers, the applicants. Also with me here this evening is Mansour Mohammed, who's a radio frequency engineer for T-Mobile Communications. We are here tonight requesting a, a special approval for a new wireless communication We are looking to, T-Mobile is looking to improve their network in, in this particular area of Madison Heights. And in so doing that, whenever we enter a community, we identify an area that we're trying to improve a gap in, in coverage or service, we look, first look to the ordinance, and then we look to any existing structures. In this particular case, there are no existing structures in this area that allow us to co-locate or, or place our antennas on. So, what we are now proposing to do is, is the next step, which is to build a new monopole. We did provide in your packets a copy of our radio frequency propagation maps, which clearly show, Jim, do you want to put those up there? Do you have those? Okay. But you have them in your packets, they look like this, the council, if you saw them. I just want to go over these real brief, briefly, so that you can see them. This is, this particular map shows our existing network, the T-Mobile network, as it operates today. What you're looking at is, in a perfect world, this whole map would be dark green, which means we would have good coverage, both in-building and in-vehicle, pedestrian outside, we would have good coverage. The light green means that we have okay coverage, but it's a bit of spotty coverage, it's a capacity issue, depending on the usage of the particular time of day, that our network isn't operating at its optimum level. Also on this map, you'll see these, these triangular circles are our existing sites, as they sit in Madison Heights and the surrounding area. This particular red dot here is where our proposed location is, this industrial area. And you can see the light green area here, basically at the corner of Edwards and Whitcomb, which is really the, the center of our search area, if you will, really where we'd want to be if we could. Unfortunately, per the requirements of your ordinance, we can't be in that area because it's too close to the residential, just on the south side of Whitcomb, as I'm sure you're aware. So, we moved as far north as we had to, to meet the requirements of the ordinance, which puts us in an industrial district. But to point out, these, these existing sites around here, you can see a couple of the pie shapes are, are coated red, and what those mean, and these are existing sites, these are all co-locations on existing, either existing buildings or existing towers, but these particular sectors are what we would call exhausted sectors, which means all that traffic in the middle here is overloading those two particular sectors in our network, which is also causing us capacity problems, which is also causing us coverage problems, which is why you can see the red dot, why we have this light green area. If we look at, at the proposed site, which is here, you can see that we have dramatically improved that light gray area from the location we're at in that industrial area. We are in an industrial district, with, the property we are on is surrounded by all industrial property. We meet the 500-foot setback from residential areas in your ordinance. Our particular site plan consists of a, we are leasing a 50 by 50 area, that area will be fenced in with an eight-foot-high chameling fence. It will be surrounded by 24 arborvitae's. It will include a 75-foot galvanized steel monopole tower, which I'm sure you have seen around the city and the community. They don't have any, there's not a guide-type structure, it doesn't have guide wires. So, it'll be a 75-foot monopole. There will be equipment cabinets located at the base of that tower, that will sit on a, a galvanized steel platform. There'll be a canopy over those, a, a weather protecting-type canopy that will sit over those cabinets for the technicians when they're working, so they're, they're out of the, the weather. There'll be a backup power, emergency power generator, it's a natural gas generator, that will also be located in the compound, that will operate only in the case when commercial power fails. And that's basically the overview of our presentation. I mean, I certainly could go into more detail, or be happy to answer any questions if you have them, but we did work with staff, we did, we did get approval on the, on the site plan. We do meet all the criteria of the ordinance, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, I think this will be a much easier public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, oh, first of all, may I, anyone else from the audience, would they like to speak on this special approval? Okay, thank you, Mr. Soltis, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I, I'm sorry, did you say this is, what kind of, a 5G tower?
Well, it will be, it will be, 5G will eventually come on it at some point, but right now, the technology will be a 4G.
So, I assume I'm not an expert at this, but it emits microwaves, is that correct? I mean, is there any public safety issue or public health issue?
No, we, we operate all within the state and federal levels of electromagnetic waves that come off the towers.
Thank you.
The public hearing's still open. Would anyone else like to address city council on special approval 1807? Okay, thank you, Bob. Anything else? Any closing remarks before we make a motion?
Nope, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I do have a question.
Oh, okay.
Would this necessitate having this tower added to aeronautical maps for ease?
We did provide, we did get an FAA determination, we provided that as a copy of your packet, and it is a
Right, I saw that.
Determination of no hazard.
But will it have to be added to aeronautical maps?
I guess I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, I want to know that all pilots, local pilots, especially private pilots, will they have warning that this tower exists on their maps that they use?
That is a good question, that's not a question I can answer, that would be more of a, of an M dot aeronautical question or an FAA question.
An FAA, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I was just concerned, because I used to fly, so
Yeah.
I wanted to find out if our pilots around here will be aware of that tower. I don't think that the heights would infringe, probably on their flight paths anyways.
No, it won't, because this tower's not required to be lit. So, if it was any, if there were any chance of it being in, in any type of airspace or aeronautical issue, then we'd be required to light it.
Okay.
And we are required to light it.
Yeah, I was just thinking about severe weather, foggy conditions, and things like that, if they can see that tower from an elevation of 1,000, 1,500 feet over, which they're required to keep. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
This is Scott, and I say this tongue-in-cheek, if they're at 75 feet, they got another problem, the least of which is
Right.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Just pointing out.
But that's what I'm wondering.
No, you're, you're right, though.
Okay, well, what's the wish of city council? Any proposed motions?
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I'm, I'm not sure if there's additional details, but I, I move that we, we adopt, approve special approval 1807 for the wireless tower.
I think it's as simple as that. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve, to grant special approval 1807 at 32401 Edward, to allow the wireless communication tower. Is there any final discussion from members of council?
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Just a, a really quick statement, that in the, the area with the, the limited or, you know, sub-par coverage, that's heavy, heavy business district, and with so much of business being done remote and on the go, this is going to be very helpful to our business community.
Good observation. Other discussion from council? All right, let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we've arrived to the portion of the agenda, that meeting is open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone to address city council on any subject. We'd ask that you identify your name and address and affiliation, but that's not required. And also, please be mindful of, we have a, a proposed three-minute time limit on any of our comments. So, if anyone would like to address city council on any subject, the meeting is open to the public now. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, y'all. I'm Bob Keller, and I live in Madison Heights. I heard that you guys are going to think about opting in in the business, the marijuana business stuff, and bringing a dispensary and road or whatever to the city. I think it'd be very, I keep sitting, you know, seeing City of Progress, you know? I mean, I really think it would be a great idea. Not only would it bring a lot of jobs, you know, money to the city and stuff like that, but the health, you know, it's going to bring to a lot of people, you know, for medicine, the medicine itself. I know a lot of people that have, have used it for, you know, for pain and cancer and, you know, things like that, so, you know, to bring the CBD oils and stuff like that to, available and everything, and the jobs it's going to create, and all these vacant buildings we have, I mean, you could bring it. I really think it'd be beneficial for the city, and, and not to mention the citizens' health lives, so, that's all I got to say, I really think it's going to be beneficial for the city.
Very good, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address city council? Welcome, thank you.
My name's Michael Leeds, I live in Madison Heights also. Also wanted to talk in support of opting into a medical marijuana program in Madison Heights. My experience mostly with everything involved that, in that is political. I worked on the MI legalized campaign for several months, and I've seen some Madison Heights, was also in support of the recreational side, but talking about medical. I've talked to hundreds of people working on campaigns, making phone calls, knocking on doors. Everyone knows someone whose life has been improved by medical marijuana. As you said, we want to be a city of progress, we need to keep an open mind to this. Obviously, I, also, we're saying, I have no stakes in this personally, I have no business interests, I, I do not use marijuana medically or recreationally, it's just the right thing to do. People need to get the medicine that they need in their town. That's my opinion on that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to make a comment to city council? All right, thank you, no one else has asked to be recognized, so we can continue on our, the agenda. The next item is C1, a communication from James Martin, it's his resignation from the Civil Service Commission. Mrs. Marsh, is there a report?
Yes, member of the Civil Service Commission, James Martin, has submitted his resignation from the board, as he's no longer a resident of Madison Heights. Staff recommends that council accept this resignation and declare the seat vacant.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council accept the resignation of James Martin from the Civil Service Commission, declare his seat vacant, and if we could, sir, could we issue a proclamation of thanks?
Thank you. Is there a support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Giddings?
Support.
Thank you, sir. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Giddings, to accept the resignation of James Martin from the Civil Service Commission, declare the seat vacant, and vacant, and send him a proclamation of thanks. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just the observation, Mr. Martin has devoted most of his life, practically all of his adult life, in service of the community as a fireman. He went up through the ranks. He served as chief, and then even after retiring, he, he served on the Civil Service Commission. I know he's also active with Lamphere and doing a lot of stuff with the kids and athletics over there. If there's anybody in the community, the kind of person we're going to miss, it's James Martin. I'm sorry to see him go. Wherever he moved to is some other community's gain and our loss. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Knowing the kids over at Lamphere, he's very, very well-liked by all the kids when he serves as the athletic trainer, and he does a fabulous job, and he's well-respected. He will be thoroughly missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would also like to recognize the fact that he has served on the Madison Heights Coalition for several years, too.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I didn't want my silence to be, to be taken the wrong way, but as advisor to the Civil Service Commission, I've worked with Jim Martin probably for the last 20 years as a member of the Commission, and he, he is, I echo the comments of council. He's an absolutely outstanding member of the Civil Service Commission. We will miss him. We wish him the best.
Excellent. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Is there a motion regarding Marianne Yemek's resignation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would like to, the council, move that council accept the resignation of Marianne Yemek from the Tax Board of Review and declare the seat vacant and issue a proclamation for her longtime service.
Thank you. Is there support? Mr. Soltis?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilmember Soltis, to accept the resignation of Marianne Yemek from the Tax Board of Review, declare the seat vacant, and issue a proclamation of appreciation for her service. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Well, I'll field Ms. Scott first, and then I'll...
Yeah, I would like to thank Marianne Yemek for all the contributions she has made since the '60s, I think, when I first knew her. She was very active in the Madison Heights Junior Women's Club and now in the Madison Heights Women's Club. She was married to Jack Yemek, longtime Recreation Director here, and if you look out, you will see the amphitheater that Jack created during his tenure with our city that has been more recently used, thank goodness, because his, his goal was to have functions like our plays and, and the other things that are been in the city for people to sit there and watch and enjoy activities in the outdoors. And so I want to thank Marianne Yemek as well as her husband, who's now deceased, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just would say ditto to everything that Mrs. Scott said. Fine lady, and certainly going to miss her here. Thank you.
Other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Reports, we have six tonight, three that were pre-printed and three that we added. The first report is D1 from the city manager regarding the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. Mrs. Marsh?
Staff worked closely with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, or the MIDC, to develop a compliance plan that would be approved for funding. The result of this work is a proposed grant agreement between the MIDC and the City of Madison Heights. Staff and I agree that this is the best agreement we could develop for first-year funding with the least amount of general fund supplement. Local share contribution is calculated to be $1,743 plus additional non-MIDC-related time of one police officer that we would be required to hire. The estimated cost for the general fund would be $72,500 per year. Upon approval by City Council, the state will disburse 50% of this grant amount to the city. We then have six months from the date of this dispersment to fully implement compliance with the new indigent defense program. We anticipate starting this in mid to late March. Based on these timelines, we have already hired the police officer to fill this position. He's currently in the academy and would not actually be starting until January of 2019. We have also completed a request for proposal for the assigned council administrator that would be managing this program. If council approves this grant agreement, the following motion would be needed: to approve the grant agreement between the State of Michigan Indigent Defense Commission and the City of Madison Heights for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $463,791.17. And I would also recognize Sharon Arsenal from the court, who has sat here patiently for this item, in case you have any questions.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Move that the council approve the grant agreement between the State of Michigan Indigent Defense, Defense Commission and the City of Madison Heights for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of $463,791.17.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to approve the grant agreement between the State of Michigan Indigent Defense Commission and the City of Madison Heights for 2019, for the fiscal year 2019, for the amount of $463,791.17. Is there discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Seven oh. Let's see, we can continue. On the agenda, next item is D2. It's a report from Special Legal Counsel for MMRMA, and it's the recommended settlement of pending litigation. What's the wish of City Council? I'm sorry, Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report first?
That was all I was going to say. Council's requested to approve the recommended settlement from the Special Legal Counsel, and the case number is 1-8-0-3-3-5-8.
Thank you. All right, what's the wish of City Council, and if you could include the case number?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the recommendation for settlement, the Special Counsel MMRMA Legal Counsel, in regards to the MMRMA case number 1-8-0-3-3-5-8.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the recommended settlement of the Special Legal Counsel in regards to the MMRMA case number 18-0-3-3-5-8. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next report is item D3 from the city attorney, and it's the recommended appointment of Special Environmental Counsel. Mrs. Marsh?
The current Special Environmental Legal Counsel has retired. As a result, the city attorney's office has gathered background and fee information on highly-regarded local attorneys who specialize in environmental law. Based on this research, is the recommendation of the city attorney that the city council approve retaining Fink and Associates at a rate of $175 per hour, and representatives are in the audience if council has any questions.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I move for City Council to approve retaining Fink and Associates at the rate of $175 per hour.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to appoint Fink and Associates as Special Environmental Counsel at a rate of $175 per hour. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Since we made the man sit here all night, perhaps we could have Mr. Fink come up and introduce himself and, and his associates.
Welcome back to Madison Heights, Mr. Fink. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I don't have much to say except to introduce my associates, Lindsey Long and Nate Fink. I work for Nate. And I actually do want to say this, I, I know Hugh Thomas very well, and you had wonderful environmental counsel for many years. I, I know you actually, longer than you have, and you couldn't have had a better lawyer. But I'll do my best, or will do our best, I should say. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I learned long ago that I talk too much and get myself in trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Fink.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would just like to say that you also were very highly recommended, and your firm, and we welcome you to Madison Heights. We're looking for good future and successful litigations. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's an honor to meet you again, Mr. Fink, and we were both somewhat younger men when I was going door-knocking for you in, in near parts of the county, so, but it's a pleasure to meet you, and, and as said, council has recommended you very highly. So thank you very much for taking this assignment, and Godspeed.
Thank you. Appreciate what you did, and I do want to say that had you worked a little harder, we might have...
Yeah, I know.
We might have gotten the 41,000 more votes than we needed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Very good. It's an easy vote for me. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to comment on that. No.
Yeah, that's where you were going to lose me, right there.
Okay, the next item is D4, which we added to the agenda. It's regarding the tentative agreement between the City of Madison Heights and MEU. What's the wish of City Council?
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Sir, I move that the council approve the tentative agreement between the city and the MEU bargaining unit.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I second.
A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to approve the tentative agreement between the city and the MEU bargaining unit. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next item is D5, which is also added. It's the tentative agreement between the city and ASME Council 25. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council approve the agreement between the City of Madison Heights and the ASME Local Number 25, which is the supervisor and assistance bargaining unit.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilor Grafstein, to approve the tentative agreement between the city and ASME Council 25, the supervisors and assistants. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is D6 regarding the employment agreement between the city and the city manager. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Okay, I move that the council move to approve the employment agreement between the city and the city manager, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the community.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Thank you, sir. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the employment agreement between the city and city manager, Melissa Marsh, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is E1. It's items for future public hearings. Ordinance 2128, it's the zoning ordinance text amendments, number 1701. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, presented for council's consideration is an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment includes several changes to the zoning ordinance as recommended by the planning commission. First is lighting. Glare and levels of lighting are a periodic issue. The planning commission directed staff to draft amendments to address glare, intensity, and motion sensor activated lighting for future consideration. The most frequent lighting issues we have had of late have been primarily glare due to direct view to LED illumination sources. These have been addressed by code enforcement directly with the property owners, either by shielding or adjusting the angle of the lighting fixture or both. The majority of the time, these issues arise where the property owner installed new fixtures, failed to pull a permit, or did not request inspections. Second, outdoor seating. Where allowed, outdoor seating currently triggers special use approval by city council. This continues to be a popular option for new and existing restaurants. The planning commission directed staff to develop standards that would allow administrative site plan review and approval of outdoor seating for facilities in the B1, B2, B3, M1, M2, and HR districts that do not have alcohol or entertainment, as well as criteria for separation of outdoor seating areas from residential districts. Should a restaurant that has outdoor seating without alcohol sales or, or entertainment subsequently seek alcohol sales or entertainment, then special use approval would be triggered. The proposed amendments also allow restaurants by right in the M1, M2, and HR districts so all restaurants are regulated equally with regard to outdoor seating. Number three, residential loft overlay zones for the M1 district area in the DDA. Many of the existing M1 zone properties on John R. south of Lincoln are underutilized due to insufficient parking and building design. Allowing residential lofts would open up another mixed-use opportunity for these properties that would also increase population in and around the DDA while reducing relative parking demand. The planning commission directed staff to develop amendment language that would accommodate lofts in the M1 area of the DDA. This is John R. frontage from 10 Mile to Lincoln, as the district standard. This would be accomplished by an overlay zone with no changes to the underlying zoning classification to the properties that would remain in M1. From a building code standpoint, both existing and new buildings could address this change, with egress and fire separation construction methods being primary concerns. Next, expand the option for use of high-rise district standards in the O1, B1, B2, B3, and M1 districts. The HR high-rise district standards may be utilized in the B2 and B3 district currently after special approval with limitations. Allowing additional stories or height in the O1, B1, and M1 districts after special approval would expand opportunities for mixed-use developments in these districts while ensuring city council and public input through the special approval process. In addition, increasing flexibility and application for those standards in the B2 and B3 districts based on parcel size and proximity to residential uses would further encourage or allow this application in new redevelopment projects. The planning commission directed staff to develop draft standards for discussion that accommodate additional height stories in the O1, B1, B2, B3, and M1 districts. Home office and home occupation. The zoning ordinance currently allows home offices by right and home occupations after special approval in the single-family residential districts. We have received periodic inquiries requiring allowing gun sales as a home office or home occupation use in the residential zoning district. The Assistant City Attorney has recommended that while we currently would not allow such use, we should specifically exempt licensed firearms dealers from operating home offices or home occupations due to the nature of this activity. Council has been provided with a section-by-section analysis of these proposed amendments, and the Assistant City Attorney has reviewed the proposed amendments. Staff and I concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and recommend that city council conduct their first reading and schedule the required public hearing for the January 14, 2019, meeting.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2128 on first reading and schedule the second reading at the next council meeting in January.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Graffstein?
Support.
Excuse me, your, your honor. This is just to schedule a public hearing. Point of clarification.
Not to adopt on first reading?
This is a first reading?
Oh, okay.
No.
Yes, this, Mr. Mayor, this is a first reading and then you're scheduling the required public hearing. This is a zoning amendment, slightly different than general law, so you are conducting your first reading, but then you're establishing the second reading and the public hearing at the January meeting.
We're lucky we got you here, Jim. My motion was correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I still second.
Ms. Graffstein seconds. So, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss made a motion that was seconded by Councilor Graffstein to approve ordinance twenty-one, twenty-eight on this first reading and to schedule a public hearing for January fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Going ahead in the agenda, we can jump to minutes. We have three sets of minutes. Would someone make a motion regarding the first?
Your honor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of November twenty-six, twenty eighteen as printed.
Thank you, is there a second?
Your honor.
Mr. Soltis?
Second, please.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding the motion to adopt as printed, the regular minutes from eleven, twenty-six, eighteen? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Is there a motion for the special minutes of November twenty-six?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Still moved.
To adopt as printed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, is there support?
Your honor.
Mr. Soltis?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding the motion to adopt as printed, the special minutes of eleven, twenty-six, eighteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Still moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I baited you for the next one, we're still on the second one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I baited you.
I fell for it.
Discussion on the second one. No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And finally, a motion for the third one, please.
You're serious, right? Okay.
This is your moment.
This is my moment to shine. I move that the council approve as printed, the special meeting minutes of December three, twenty eighteen.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding the motion to adopt as printed, the special minutes of twelve, three, eighteen? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Tax board review. Barbara Castle is willing to be reappointed. This is not a mayor's appointment, so if a member of city council would like to reappoint her, it'd be a two-year term, Barbara Castle on tax board review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to appoint Barb Castle to a two-year, two-year term on the voting review.
Thank you. I guess maybe we'll clarify to, to expire January one.
To expire January?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Any discussion to appoint Barbara Castle to a two-year term expiring?
Mr. Mayor.
January one, twenty twenty-one.
Sorry.
Discussion?
Yes, sir. I'll sit out since it's a blood relative for the voting.
Okay.
My cousin, okay.
Thank you, sir, for addressing that. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And we recognize the one abstention from Mr. Geddings, so it passes six to zero. City council will go into executive session, we will vote on that. When city council, if city council goes to executive session, this regular meeting will remain open. And then city council will come back out here to adjourn the regular meeting when it is finished in the executive session. So, Mr. Sherman, what would the proper language be for council to enter the executive session?
A motion would be to go into closed session to discuss specific pending litigation pursuant to Section Eight of the Open Meetings Act.
Would someone bring forward that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett? So moved, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, for city council to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, which is exempt from Section Eight of the Open Meetings Act. Is there any discussion?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Just a recommendation that we quickly do closing comments before we go back.
Okay, let's include that in the discussion. So, we'll wrap up with some closing comments, just for the meeting in general. Mr. Corbett, are you prepared?
Yeah, and I actually did have.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, sorry to jump in. A roll call vote is required. Are you gonna wait until after the closing comments? We haven't voted on the motion yet.
Yeah, right, we haven't voted.
May I suggest that we go ahead and vote, but before we bail out of here, we can do it. So, we'll go ahead and do the.
All right, so any final discussion on the motion to go into executive session? Final discussion on that? All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. If you support going into the closed session, you'd say aye or yes, and if you would oppose, you say no. Will the clerk take a roll call vote?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Graffstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Hartlon?
I vote yes, the motion carries, seven oh. All right, so before council steps out to executive session, I'd invite any closing comments. Mr. Corbett?
I actually did have some for this evening, but I think I'm going to pass because it was gonna take more than a few minutes and we've been here a while. So, other than just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, I guess that about covers it. I would say have a good holiday and we'll see you next time.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, your honor. For the few people who might still be watching at home, or the people who clicked to the very end of the YouTube video, I, I wanted to mention that the Arts and Culture Board is doing a fundraiser tomorrow night at Texas Roadhouse. It's from four to ten. Print the flyer, bring it in. Ten percent of all proceeds go to the Arts Board and more arts and culture programming in the city. Also, I, I don't know if we have, do we have any of the Citizens Academy people left?
We do.
Yeah. I, I assume now you do not want to be involved after sitting through this meeting, but I, I appreciate everybody who participated in the, the Citizens Academy. We had a really great, really great group. I, I enjoyed meeting everybody today and I look forward to seeing you all around and working with you to make our city better.
Thank you, Mr. Geddings.
Yes, sir. I just wish everybody Merry Christmas and a great new year, and for any of the kids who might get sleds or toboggans, hopefully you'll have some snow on the hill and you'll be able to go out and have a good time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City manager, Mrs. Marsh?
Other than the wish for snow, I just echo all the comments before.
Thank you. City clerk, Mrs. Prince?
No comments, thank you.
Councilor Graffstein?
I actually do have a few comments, and I'm going to try and keep them short because it has been a long night, but I do think that one thing that came out tonight with this whole discussion with BJ's that has been on my mind for a while is that when we are making special approvals and we're looking at what we want to do, and I know that the city is looking at doing their master plan, we really need to build with the future in mind. We, we need to not just think of right now or the five years or even the next ten years, we really need to have a future outlook. We are the city of progress and what does that, what does that mean? As we envision what we want our city to look like, we need to be mindful of changes that are currently taking place in the surrounding industries. GM has recently committed to a future of electrified vehicles. Ford is rebuilding the train station as their electrification hub. What are we in the city doing to take advantage of this industry swing and what are we doing to support residents who want to go with electric? Do we really need more gas pumps or should we be looking at promoting electric charging stations? We've got all this traffic, which everybody keeps talking about, and yes, eventually the construction will stop, but now we're going to have BJ's and we're gonna have more people coming to the city, which is wonderful, and I love that the smoothie place and all the little restaurants along there are getting filled and that we have this, but as we're bringing more people here, what are we doing to attract even more people, not necessarily to live here, but to come and to be in our businesses? And having charging stations can actually really help with that, and I would like to look at what we can do if we could partner with DTE to put charging hubs onto city property. You know, we're looking at redoing our parking lots and maybe we can look at including charging stations with those if they're really just a parking spot with a plug. Last meeting for the ECC, we looked at adding attractive native plants to, you know, so that we can have environmentally sustainable landscaping, and we're looking at rain gardens, and we're looking at maybe having bee sanctuaries and butterfly sanctuaries. So, we're looking at all these things that aren't only going to make the city look more attractive, which can bring people here, but it's also good for the environment. And again, why can't we look at charging stations? So, I, I just, I feel that tonight, we spent over an hour talking about BJ's and it seemed to be really good conversation because everyone wants to have them here and a number of people seem to have issues that they seem to be willing to work around, so I, I really like that. And to me, this looks like it's going to, it's going to be a good, a good fit for us, but I do think we need to really look forward when we're making these decisions. It's the new year, we have a new city manager, we're looking at redoing our master plan, we're revamping our boards and commissions, we've just had a very successful Citizens Academy for the first time. So, we need to build on this momentum and we need to get the public engaged in what everybody else in the city wants to see and what we can do. So, happy holidays and happy new year. Thank you for being with us for the last few hours.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the spirit of wishing everybody happy holidays, we'd like to review your homes and see how well they're decorated, and so the active adult board will be going out a week from tomorrow, Tuesday evening, December eighteenth, at five o'clock, and we will be judging some of the holiday decorations that are in your homes and on display. I think we also go to some of the businesses, too, but we will be awarding them our certificates and et cetera, recognition for their beautiful holiday displays. You have to call and they need to be nominated by calling the Recreation Department Public Services at two four eight, five eight nine, two two nine four, or you can send an email into the city that we would, you would like to nominate that home, just supply the address for us and we will review that and, and then give our opinions about how we feel about that. Also, I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that we're having holiday company over. The historical rooms will be open on, through December, but you need to make an appointment, and we'd be happy to take anybody through on our own, and you can schedule an appointment at any day, night, weekend, and bring your family and see what we have to offer in our heritage rooms downstairs. We are also open on Tuesday, January eighth, and Tuesday, January twenty-second, from three to seven PM, which are our regular hours, but you need to call two four eight, eight three seven, two six eight seven, if you would like to have a private viewing anytime in December or through the new year. So, thank you very much, and I wish happy holidays again to everybody and I hope that they drive safely. We will be starting to hold some hearings in January regarding the marijuana situation in Madison Heights, and I would welcome anybody to come forward and please speak at our next meeting or any meeting following, and let us know what you feel about that because the council is considering what we're gonna do based on the vote that came through Madison Heights. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I learned a couple things tonight. One is Marjane Scott, or Councilwoman Scott, was an actual pilot.
Yes.
That's amazing, I had no idea. And that, also amazingly, I didn't realize that Councilman Corbett knocked on doors when he campaigned, but, but, you know, mysteries, mysteries in the world. We, we are still, we're gonna have the public safety Christmas dinner again for police and fire, so keep them in your prayers when they work this holiday season. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. It's been a long year with a lot of debates and issues and problem solving. Again, I want to thank Melissa Marsh for applying for the job and taking the position. It was, it was a great process and I'm glad you're here, you're gonna be with us a long time, I know it, but please send a message to all the city staff that city council sincerely and deeply appreciates what our employees do for us. And with that, I guess we'll go to executive session now, so keep the cameras rolling.